To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as we see this world of progress on the land of our children.
As Ms. Brannon isn't here this morning, I'll do the invitation. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together as Board of County Commissioners and public leaders for Eddy County. We ask Thou Spirit to attend us as we counsel together and discuss matters for the benefit of the citizens of the county. We're grateful for the blessings of living in a free land, Father. And we ask that Thy Spirit would be upon our local and national leaders, that they would look to Thee for inspiration and perspective. We pray, Father, for all who defend this nation, for our first responders, and ask Thy hand to be over them, to watch and care for them. We're grateful, Father, for the opportunities that Thou affords us. As we go through our meeting today, Father, we pray that we would work with diligence and integrity to do the best for those that have placed us in these roles. We humbly offer this prayer in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen. Morning, Commissioners. Commissioner Carlson sends his apologies. He had a conflict that he needed to be elsewhere, he had an appointment that he couldn't reschedule and just, he tried to get it resolved. But anyway, so, safe travels for Commissioner Carlson this morning. Are there any public comments in the audience this morning? Seeing none, I do have one written comment that came in last week, and this is from Mr. Nicholas Maxwell from Hobbs, New Mexico. And his comment is, "Hello, when meeting on September 21st, please be sure to appoint a new primary director to the Eddy Energy Alliance Board to replace former Commissioner Susan Crockett. The bylaws of ILEA mutually adopted under the authority of the governing body and the other members require the primary director to be an elected official of the governing body. Susan Crockett has been the primary director and Jack Balpatto has been the secondary director. The secondary director is picked at the pleasure of the county commission." And that's all that is there. With no other public announcements, we do have a large list of service awards that we'd like to recognize this morning. And we'll start with Lucinda Phillips from detention, 20 years.
Yeah, 20 years in detention is like 50 years in anything else. Bless her.
Next, we have Gemma Ferguson, 10 years, the assessor. Susan Galvin from the clerk's office has 10 years, and she's not available this morning, so we'll still recognize her for 10 years of service in the clerk's office. Jennifer Armendaras, Office of Emergency Management. Ms. Roxanne Brannan from Human Resources has 10 years, and she's not available this morning, so we'll recognize. Frank Barrera, Treasurer's Office, 10 years. Frank's not available this morning, but we'll recognize Frank's 10 years. Then Ms. Lori Pruitt, Treasurer, 10 years. Richard Knight from the Sheriff's Office has 10 years. Richard's not available this morning, but we'd like to recognize him. And last but not least, Mr. John Ranson, detention, five years. Why don't you take that way you give?
Okay, sir. I share. I share. Call me late for supper.
Large group at this meeting and for this session, but we're very appreciative of all of the service from our employees. It takes everyone to keep the county running and to make things run as well as they do. So, thank you to everyone, and these special milestones, one last round of applause.
Can we do a picture with everyone?
Yeah, we can. For all of those that had received an award, we'll go out into the foyer and we'll get a group picture of everyone. Commissioners?
It's your paparazzi moment.
Yeah.
Smile big.
Yeah, oh heavens knows. Hold all up, nowhere to go.
Story my, no it isn't, because I don't call up ever. Not my thing.
Nice haircut. Can you imagine? I said, "Just trim it." And I said, "What the heck?" She said, "I'll put a five on here." And then my hair is gray, it's going to stick straight out, so I have to grease it down so it won't stick out like a porcupine.
Must've got an Edward Scissorhands.
Yeah. Thank you, ma'am.
I must've pulled a page.
It was? That's a lot of years of service. So clearly, September was a good month for hiring. There's 110 years of service represented there in those milestones, so we appreciate that. We'll now move into the training agenda portion. Item number one, a commission meeting minutes approval for September 7, 2021.
Questions or comments?
None.
Having none, entertain a motion that we approve the commission meeting minutes for September 7, 2021.
Second?
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is the purchase card approval list for August 2021.
Questions or comments? Having none, we entertain a motion to approve the P. Card approval list for August 2021. Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. In your agenda pack, it was the Treasurer's report for August 2021 for your information. The next item of business is the August 2021 revenue report. Ms. Roberta?
Good morning, Ms. Roberta.
Ms. Roberta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the August 2021 revenue reports for grocery receipts tax, county collected a little over $3 million for August, which is quite a bit over our monthly target of $1.8 million. I was not able to find where the increase was on GRT. The RP-80 reports are not available to us right now, so I was unable to find out where that increase was, but as soon as I get it, I will report that to you guys. For oil and gas, for the month of August, the county collected right at $4 million for oil and gas production and equipment. This was for May's business month, so this was when we were at about $61, a little over $61 per barrel. And for this month of August, we were at about $15.3 million barrels collected for August. And of course, it puts us not quite double of what our monthly target goal was for oil and gas, so quite a bit over on oil and gas already. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions, comments? Prices remain firm and production continues to grow slightly, so I just updated production data yesterday. Should be.
Yeah, for September, if production stays the same, of course, oil prices went up that next month, so it'll be even higher than this $4 million we received for September.
September average, I think, was 67, 70, something like that, WTI. So, yeah, let's steady on, continue to do what we do to help support the industry.
Questions, comments? Having none, we entertain a motion that we approve the budget versus actual, excuse me, the August 2021 revenue report.
Second?
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Ms. Roberta's still on the hot seat for budget versus actual August revenue and expenses.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for August, the county has collected 32% of its total overall revenue and expensed about 25% of its overall expenses. For general fund, we're quite a bit over. We've collected 17.8% of our total revenue. And for general fund expenses, we're at 33%. But again, as reported every month, it's really due to those transfers. We really don't balance out towards we get to the end, so you take the transfers out, we're quite a bit under.
Questions on budget versus actual? Having, uh, question, Beard? Okay, we've got a motion to approve the budget versus actual. Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberta. Ms. Roberta? And that's not the hot seat item. Shouldn't speak like that. Next item of business is the traffic control US 82 for Navajo refinery turnaround. Sheriff Cage?
Good morning. This is just, Navajo reached out to us, they're going to be doing some construction, and they want to make sure that everything, we've done this before, they want to make sure everything's safe. So instead of the county footing the bill for the overtime, for deputies to be out there dedicated to that, they're going to pay for overtime for deputies to go out there and just do traffic control and make sure everything's okay. Again, we've done this before, and it's actually a really good partnership with, as we were talking, you're talking about with the industry, so supporting them. Opportunity for some deputies to make a little extra money, too.
Sure, sure. How's that plan? I mean, I guess that's up to you. I'm just wondering when we're going to be done with 82.
I thought it was done.
Is it done?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
They finally finished that.
Okay, good.
Now we're waiting on 285. We'll see how that goes.
Oh, okay.
Is that the refinery, just the traffic in and out?
I got it.
Close to the main intersection there.
Okay, I thought this was still built. I was like, oh, yeah, I thought, surely we're getting close.
No, they've got some, they've got some extra stuff going on there.
Okay, good deal. Entertained a motion that we approve the traffic control US 82 Navajo refining turnaround.
Some move?
Second.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Next item of business is the ConocoPhillips donation grant, Joshua Mack, fire rescue.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ConocoPhillips usually gives us a donation annually. They're requiring a grant portal this year. In the past, Stu with ConocoPhillips has done that and always just kind of guaranteed the grant. He no longer works for them, so we were just letting you all know that we went ahead and applied for the grant so we can try to get the donation of the $10,000.
And ConocoPhillips is, I've met with the new Public Affairs Rep for Conoco, she's here in their loving office, so I would continue to have a great relationship and association with ConocoPhillips. They're very community-minded.
All entertain a motion that we approve the ConocoPhillips donation slash grant.
Second.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item of business is fire protection grant applications, Joshua Mack, fire rescue.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so we went ahead and applied for the state fire grants that opened up this year. I tried to break it down the best that kids are being new, so for the stipends, we submitted 13 applications for $25,000 each, totaling up to $325,000 of possible stipend money. For each individual project, we did $2,985,299. And then if we were to be awarded all of these, our total matching funds to offset some of the projects would be $571,144. So we're looking at about $3.5 million worth of projects that we would get knocked out and only spend $571,000, so. We're hopeful, there's $21 million, I was told by the state fire marshal. The disheartening part was, there was 252 applications before we submitted our 13, so. I say disheartening, it's not really disheartening, because the big thing was, when we pushed for all that money to be moved over, we were really worried that enough people wouldn't apply, and obviously, they have. So, due to our ISO ratings and what we have as far as equipment goes, we will fall lower on the approval, but a lot of applications were coming in incomplete, having missing things, so we never know. We may have the 13 right applications, so. But I want to thank the staff, they did an amazing job, they did that while I was out, and they got it knocked out. So, on the plus side, we have a budget built for capital items as well for the future, so.
When will the awards be notified?
It usually takes them 60 to 90 days. Sometimes they can kick it out sooner, it just depends. Last year, they awarded a total of $7 million, this year, $21 million, so.
We approve.
Entertained a motion that we approve the fire protection grant applications.
Some move?
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Item number eight, approval of the execution of a corrections acquitclaim deed for Eddy County to Oxy USA executed October 18. Mr. Taber?
The county sold that property to Oxy back in 18. Oxy prepared the deed, approved by the title company, and lo and behold, it had the wrong township in there, rather than 23, it should have been 22. And they picked it up, noticed it just in the last couple of weeks, I think they called the chairman, they called me, and I said, "Well, send it back here, that's just a scrudner's error." And it's actually on the plat, the correct township, it just, when they put it in the deed, they made a mistake. And so this is just to correct that one thing, correct township 22 as opposed to 23.
So this is just a notification?
That's right. Well, we need to get approvals for the chairman to go ahead and sign that correction deed.
Absolutely, yeah, Oxy called, Cass already had it all taken care of, so appreciate the expediency there. So we'll entertain a motion that we approve the execution of the correction acquitclaim deed from Eddy County to Oxy.
Some move?
Second.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Taber.
Yes, sir.
Next item is the resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Any questions, items to pull, discuss?
I'm a little curious about the new precinct, just curious.
Shall we?
Do you want to pull?
Yeah.
Item number three?
We entertain a motion pulling that to discuss.
Yes.
Okay.
Item A3.
Entertained.
Just three or four?
What do you want to pull?
You want three and four, Fred?
Yes, that's, I forgot to rush the other one. Yes, let's pull them, talk about them a little bit.
We entertain a motion that we approve the resolution and agreement consent agenda as presented, pulling items A3 and 4.
Some move?
Second.
Motion is second, please call for the vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Just the one precinct is all that was added?
Those, the others were already done in 2019.
Okay, so.
And approved by the commission. I wasn't aware of that at the time, so I verified all of that. This last precinct had a lot of voters, and so when they have over 750 voters and two generals, or one general, then we need to plus the population growth. So that's why this last split is on here. The next resolution is assigning those polling places. So you guys passed a resolution earlier that's required in June, I believe, but I wanted to add the new precincts in there because it is for the next year's elections. So that way, that covers all of our new precincts as well.
Okay. Things cool.
Everything's great.
Any further questions? Having none, we entertain a motion that we approve resolutions A3 and 4.
Some move?
Motion and a?
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Please call for the vote. We have two, we have two motions.
Okay. Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Darlene. Here's, there are three copies of the Resolution 2194, and Commissioners need to sign all three copies if you would please. While you're doing that, the next item of business is department updates. Ms. Jennifer?
Thank you. My name is Jen.
Is this your birthday, is that what it is?
It is, yes.
Then you have the same birthday as Sarah's daughter.
Oh, happy birthday to her. Happy birthday to you. Thank you.
I suspect if we really wanted, we could get the sheriff to sing happy birthday.
Oh, let's not do that.
Come on, Jennifer, that would be a birthday present for all of us.
So, on to the update. So we're at 47.6 vaccinated over 18 for Eddy County. Since August 13th of starting our clinics again up at the Civic Center, we're at 1,115. Since March that we have been doing those clinics out there, we're at 4,949. We won't be having a clinic on the 24th. They had already rented the Civic Center out prior to starting those back up, so. And then again, on Monday, the 11th of October, we won't have a clinic then because Department of Health has a holiday. Starting on October 18th, we're going to go back to Mondays only, depending on, and we'll kind of look at the numbers and see, you know, how they go. They're talking about opening the age group up again, so the numbers should vamp up again. And if that happens, then we'll revisit the Monday, Friday, but for now, we're going to go back to only Mondays, beginning the 18th of October. And we may extend the hours, right now, we're doing 8:30 to 11:00, but if we do the one day only, we may extend the hours a little bit. So, beginning the 13th of September, Department of Health stopped doing any testing in their offices, both in Artesia and in Carlsbad. So that put us in kind of a hard spot with not having the availability of testing, and you've got all these mandates that are being required by the different companies, you know, if you're not going to get vaccinated, you have to get tested, and now we're limiting the testing. I took an afternoon and called several of the local pharmacies and CBS and Walgreens, because that was what was being told to me, is that you guys still have this available in your county. And that is, while it is there, it's very, it's slim to none. One, because their staffing, their shortage of staffing, like everybody else, there, he said, a couple of them said, "Yeah, we offer, online it says, you know, you can do a walk-in." And that may work in Albuquerque or the north, you know, north of the state, but here it doesn't. We have two people in our pharmacy, or we have one person that works part-time, or whatever it may be. So, the testing is not available like they think it is down here. So, we contacted Curative Testing directly, and between the county, the city, and the school superintendents, we are trying to implement a program to bring more testing availability here to Eddy County. So, I don't know if you want to...
It's, it's a, we believe that these directions have come from the regional office in Roswell. Mayor Janeway and I signed a letter to James Masters, the regional director, asking what in the wide world's going on and explaining our situation. In the meantime, we're trying to pursue an additional avenue to have additional testing capability within the county. We'd like to have as much as five days of available testing. We were thinking a couple of days in Carlsbad, a couple of days in Artesia, and maybe a day in Loving. We need to help supplement the staff for Curative. The staff they have, some, a small portion is from this county, but the rest of them are in the other counties where the van moves to. The director for Curative in this area told us that if we could help them with their staff, then he thought that we could do more, spend more time here. And so, Ms. Jennifer's working to organize some of our staff, some of the city staff, the school staff, the nurses. They have to do a little bit of training, but we need one or two observers, because these are self-administered, but they observe the administration of the test, make sure it's done properly, and then they get the kit back, and Curative takes care of it. So, we need a couple of folks for a two-hour shift, depending on the location, one day a week, a couple of days a week, right? So we think we can cover that, we think we can get them trained, just being able to get Curative to commit to, "Yeah, we can do that, and here's how we'll organize it." The schools have a big need because of the directives they have for testing as mandated by the state. So, it's, depending on the response we get back from the regional office, we may have to go to the state-level office to change the path that the local Department of Health or the regional Department of Health has set for us. It's a shame. If we had more testing available, I think we could help continue the downward trend of the positivity that we're experiencing here in the county, so.
So Curative is going to set up?
So Curative is going to set up down here, or?
Right now, they're, um, on Mondays from nine to one, I believe, they are at the Civic Center in the front part of the parking lot. During our clinics, they are doing testing then. And then on Tuesdays, they park up in Artesia, at the Artesia Bowl, um, or Bulldog Bowl, and do testing there from the same hours. And that one van moves between Eddy County, Lee, Lee County, and, um, Chavis County. So each day of the week, they go to separate counties.
Will they allow you guys to set up an account? Have you guys asked that question or anything?
Yes, and that's what we're working on, we're trying to be able to, um, leverage the account with them just giving the test kits to, you know, directly to the schools or, um, to the city or to the county. And then also, if we can, um, help with the staffing, then they'll do it themselves.
The detention center has an account with Curative, that, that's where we get our test material from. And it took a while to get that organized and set up, but I think, Ward, I don't know if he's still here, but, um, it took a, took a while to get it organized, but I think it's functioning fine now. The challenge is getting the test kits back to Curative so that they get analyzed within the shelf life of the, of the sample.
I also have a Curative account, so if you guys need help with that, let me know. I have supplies and they will be very quick about getting them back to me.
Then we can leverage the influence of a county commissioner to help them make a decision.
Other than that, I?
I've got a couple of questions. I just want to make sure I understand. So Department of Health is testing nowhere in the state anymore, is that right?
Um, that I don't know. Um, I just know that in Eddy County, the two offices decided that they don't need to test anymore, that they have other, um, things that are more important besides COVID.
So the pandemic is no longer a problem in Eddy County?
According to Department of Health, they have other.
Regional office.
Is there a way to like, get that in a statement or something? That'd be helpful.
Um, I think.
And I'm not trying to be ugly, I'm very serious, I mean, this is a major issue.
In asking the question, I, the, the initial question that I had to Department of Health directly was, where did the decision, where was the decision made? Was it made in Roswell at the regional office, or was that a decision by Santa Fe? I've given, I've been given both answers. So I have yet to get a, a direct answer as to where it's come from. I'm hoping with the letter, um, to Masters Office, Regional Office out of Roswell, that maybe their reply will get an answer and, and maybe move forward from, from there. But in the meantime, um, you know, I, I came to Mr. Davis and to the mayor, and we don't, it's like with anything else. I mean, Eddy County, you know, we're rural, and we're gonna have to pull together, just like we did with the clinics.
Right.
Well, and I have a little insight there, I, that Department of Health, they don't have the staff. I mean, there was one nurse.
Yes, locally, here.
And still having to work vaccines, STDs, you know, everything else. They did, they brought in the, um.
National Guard.
National Guard to vaccinate and test, and that's just a lot for one nurse to do.
Oh, yeah.
And it's not our local nurse that's making that decision, she's, she's, she's done a yeoman's job, she's just outstanding. Uh, Susan Williams, and we do everything we can to support her.
Yeah.
Um, but her, she, the regional office puts, puts the handcuffs on her with regularity.
Well, I guess that's my question, is, is with them constantly calling out this side of the state for, for having such an influx, you would think that maybe there should be some staffing or some sort of help for this poor, I mean, I agree, for one person. That's, that's overwhelming.
That's been an issue for well over a year, we've, we've really pressed hard to try, oh, we're working on it, well, that's nonsense.
But I mean, the second part of the issue is, you're right, I mean, what, if you're unvaccinated schoolteacher, how many times do you have to test?
Once a week.
And if you don't test, you don't get to teach? Do you have a shortage of teachers? So that seems like a good plan. I mean, all these things really aren't working, a- and yet she's continuously, and I say she, because the governor can send help, I'm assuming. I mean, so, this is a, man, I, I'm sorry, every time you come up here, I just get frustrated, because.
Oh, believe me, it's.
It's very disheartening to see that, that, I, I think folks are trying to do what they're supposed to do, and we're continuously.
Yes, are you guys still testing for COVID tests in Santa Fe?
Because, uh, it's not right. It's just not right to continuously hold rural counties.
Okay, thank you.
Hostage with her mandates.
Santa Fe, they're not testing in Santa Fe either.
Okay. Maybe they sell on numbers anymore? I don't know, I mean, I don't understand the, the reasoning, but.
They told me we could go to Curative.
So you can go to curative dot, dot org, online, you just Google Curative, it'll come up, just like the vaccination portal. You register and you'll get an appointment, but, um, either, i- if it's Monday or Tuesday, y- y- you know, and you get in, in that time allotted, then you're okay. But if it's a Wednesday, you're gonna have to wait till the next available, which is on a Monday, or you're driving to Artesia, or they're coming.
There's limited numbers, so you could, you could not get an appointment.
Who's testing in Artesia? Cause up here, y'all have CBS and Walgreens.
CBS, that's the hospital.
Are most of the tests, just in-home tests anymore?
No.
No, they are, um, a swab, but it's a shallow swab, and it's, um, you give it, so Curative will hand you a little.
You go, you go and get the deal, and then you take it back?
No, you do it right in front of them, they have to observe you giving yourself the test. And then you put the Q-tip back into the bag and, or into the tube, which goes into the plastic bag sealed, and then you hand it back to the person observing.
So there are shelf tests, you can buy at Walgreens?
Yeah.
There, there is, and I did ask them about that, both CBS and Walgreens, they get a hundred at a time, and he said neither one of them can keep them on the shelf longer than an hour. However, the schools do not accept those tests as, um, they require the, the other test. Um, and then there's several companies that won't accept those either.
But, uh, uh, you know, who is, besides the hospital, who's testing in Artesia? Like, where can people in Artesia go to test?
The hospitals are, they're not limiting the number of tests that they do, but the tests that they're doing are principally for their patients and services, right? That, it's hard to get it, it's hard to get a test at either hospital.
You can't walk in to the hospital.
So, anywhere? Does LOL, does?
It's limited, we, when we spoke last week.
That's why it was a concern.
That's why we're trying to take this action is.
So I don't know how many teachers we have in Artesia, but are they all gonna come to CBS now? I mean, these are serious questions, and apparently CBS is overwhelmed.
Both schools, um, do have internal testing, I think they go through a company called Vault.
Okay, so they're okay.
Um, but the turnaround time, when we talked to the superintendents, is, is longer with Vault than it would be with Curative. And also with the students, um, they don't get tested internally. So if you have a student that is either exposed or, um, you know, has any symptoms, they have to go outside of the schools to get tested. The school's system is only set up for their staffing.
I mean, it's ironic that last year at this time, they're begging us to take tests, this year, they don't want to test us anymore, and yet we're mandated.
You know, maybe the silver lining is, we can at least get good numbers from these private companies, rather than Department of Health, who apparently can't add at all, so.
I can show you guys how.
So the, the, the data through yesterday for Eddy County, we're seven hundred and ninety-five, uh, positive cases. Uh, eight hundred, eight thousand three hundred and fifty-one tests for the month, which is an average of about thirty-nine point eight per day, which is not as high as the average in August, um, but it's as high as some of the ones that we had at the end of last year, November, December, January. So I will say that the data suggests that the positivity is on a downward trend now. We, we hope that continues, um, with vaccinations, testing, isolation. But it's, it's a real challenge, right? Businesses are back at work, others are, and with that, and the, the executive orders that came out two weeks ago from the president, um, he's, he, he made an executive order, he talked about companies of a hundred plus, you know, private companies, that they would mandate that their employees be tested. He directed OSHA and, uh, some medical agency to, to draft rules to do that. If the OSHA rules are, the emergency rules are put in place, New Mexico is a state that adheres to the national OSHA standards. Um, so if those rules are issued, they would go to the state of New Mexico, and the Mex- state of New Mexico would have to adopt them. If OSHA rules are put out in the state of New Mexico regarding mandated vaccinations and testing, um, local governments would fall under that OSHA umbrella, and OSHA would have to enforce that across the state. So that's something we're watching diligently, um. I don't know when it will go, if it will go, where it will go, but, um, stay tuned, more to come on that, I guess. But as a local effort, we're trying to help meet the needs of the citizens with this testing and trying to get our arms around Curative and say, hey, stay here with us, we'll help you be successful, we need you to be successful, so.
And this is being done in other counties, so, um, I've been working closely with the other EMs that have this already in their county setup and kind of trying to mirror what they're doing, so, and it's been successful there.
Does anybody know the relationship between Curative and, uh, state?
They do have the state contract to do the testing.
I mean, are they like somebody's cousin or something, that they shut down all of the DOHs?
They're out of Los Angeles.
They're out of San Dimas, California, but it, in order to create an account, it all fa- falls under the New Mexico Department of Health. So they're the main account holder, and you just branch out from there.
It just, it just doesn't seem right, where they say, get tested, get tested, get tested, oh, by the way, we're now cutting all testing. So it's like sheriff having to go by cameras when they, you know, it's just unfunded mandate is essentially what's going on. So we want to keep people healthy, but we actually don't want to do this, so you're gonna have to pay for it, you're gonna have to do, go through these other, go through these other, uh, companies who are getting paid to test, it just.
Now, patients don't have to pay anything to test, testing is.
Your insurance will be charged, though. I, I don't like that they push that out, that they, that they, I, well, I just disagree. I want to be upfront with people when they go to get tested, I mean, or even the vaccination, if you have insurance, your insurance is gonna more than likely be charged for it. So this, this thing that the state's pushing out, that it's this free test and free vaccination, I mean, someone pays for it.
And Curative's probably making money handling the fist, doing the deal, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm not saying that we don't need them, we do need them, obviously. But this is just another example of unfunded mandates is, is, is what's happening, which.
To get tested at the hospital, you have to get an order from your doctor, so there's a copay, and.
And then, and then the hospital will charge your insurance for it.
Right.
No, but they did say the teachers, if the teachers want to be tested, they have to do so at their own expense, that's correct, if they're used to get it. Yeah. Right. Well, Jennifer, your job really sucks. Cawley.
Happy birthday, Jennifer.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Jennifer.
Keep doing what you're doing, love.
Keep it, yeah, keep it up, Jennifer.
You really know how to rain on a birthday.
I know, I know.
Any other department updates?
I'm getting scared now.
Any other up, department updates? Seeing none, um, legislative update, Mr. Fanning is on the road. Uh, he was up and galloped, meeting with, um, the state representatives, so some good things coming out of that. I'll let him tell you about his, his visiting trip, so. I don't see any other legislative update. Uh, we'll move to the travel request consent agenda.
Any questions or comments on the travel request consent agenda? Having done here to a motion that we approve, travel request consent agenda as presented.
Some move.
Second.
Motion second, please call for the vote.
Cordova? Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. We do not have any emergency business this morning. Next item is the legislators and elected officials' comments, notes, and updates. Sheriff Cage.
Good morning, Jeff.
Morning, Sheriff.
It's not my birthday, so you can't be mean to me. We, well, yeah. We're, we're slowly getting some of the vehicles that were authorized by this commission, uh, last year, last budget year. Chevy has finally delivered some of those, and we're, we're evaluating, we really like to keep our, we, we, we had an idea to keep our fleet one thing, we, we were looking for Chevy Tahos, cause that, that's seems to be the best thing for us, and it's what the, the deputies like the best. Unfortunately, um, I don't know what's gonna happen with Chevy, they, they're, they're telling us that they may not be able to, uh, fit us in. So we may have to look at a different vehicle, which is just unreal that, that where we've gotten with all this. So the ones that you have approved for us in this budget year, we still haven't even gotten, we haven't gotten them ordered yet. Um, because of all this, we're waiting to see, because we would, the preference is to get Tahos, to keep our fleet about even, but it's, we're, we're struggling with it all. We, we've been picking up some of our, our other, our civilian-looking vehicles from, uh, the CES contract, and that's been, that's been easy, cause they have vehi- they have a few vehicles on the lot, they're starting to trickle in. So we're, we're struggling with all that, we've got one vehicle waiting right now because they need some chips for the light bar. The, they, they, we can't get a light bar, and I pretty much mandated, we keep, we have light bar, I don't like slip tops, I, I like to have the, the extra light. So we have a vehicle that we purchased that's sitting there at, uh, the, the outfitters with no light bar on it, because we can't buy a light bar, go figure. It, it, a- a- and, and just to, it's interesting to see what's going on in Del Rio, I'm sure everybody's seen that. And now the, the, uh, it, the, the administration in DC is now talk, they're, they wanna, they're gonna send the military over there. After Texas DPS actually stepped up and, and did that, which I was very proud to see. I, I, I'm still very concerned because of those enforcement actions there, and the enforcement actions in Arizona, as to what that's going to do for us. And we're, we're gonna discuss that tomorrow, uh, you know, obviously, the, the NMC Annual Conference was canceled because of our horrific numbers here in southeast New Mexico. Uh, the, the sheriffs are still meeting, um, we're still holding our affiliate meeting, um, tomorrow and tonight. We, we have a function tonight as well, because we have to discuss this, we have to support those sheriffs that have basically no resources down on our southern border, we have to talk about, you know, what we can do to support them. And it's scary, because even, even the, the agencies like me, like Corey Hilton in Lee County, we're fortunate. We, we have, we have good budgets, we have, we don't lack for Manning, uh, we're, we're, we're pretty well-staffed. But we got a lot going on here, just like they do in Lee County. And I honestly don't, I, I, I can't afford to spare deputies to go over there and help out. So I don't know what we're gonna do, um, but we're gonna discuss it tomorrow and, and see if we can come up with some ideas. Cause we, we, we know that the New Mexico National Guard's not gonna get sent to our border, that, that's not gonna happen. We're not gonna get any, any support from the state, um, so that's where we're at with it. It's a big concern for us, we are fortunate that we are not directly on the border. Then we would have to be looking at some, some very drastic measures to protect ourselves. I don't know what they're gonna do in Doniana County, I really don't, good luck. I have no idea, so that, that's where, that's where, uh, that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna, like I said, the sheriffs are, we're, we're trying to get a little more organized, get where we're meeting more, and where we can support some of these others, cause again, I, I don't lack for support. Corey Hilton doesn't lack for support. We, 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 we do well, we do, we're, we're, we're maintaining fairly well. Some of these other folks just don't have, they don't have any money, they don't have any manpower, and they don't have any resources, and they're struggling. So it's, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what we do. So it's, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what we do. But uh, I'm, I'm also concerned about our, our vaccination numbers with, and that, that's obviously, I, I will always say that that, that's a choice that, that, that folks need to be able to make, that as, as free Americans, they should be able to make that choice. But these mandates coming down, the county manager and I talked about, about the impact that it could have. Interestingly enough, Burnaleo County and Albuquerque have said, we're not gonna do it. I was like, Burnaleo County and Albuquerque have said no? Where, where did that come from? So I, I don't know, it's gonna be interesting to see how this goes, but the legislative session is coming up. We're already hearing some really horrific bills that are gonna get dropped, um, that are gonna affect law enforcement. We, we're seeing, and, and this is something that I, I hope that, that y'all will keep in consideration when you're talking to legislators, is um, the Law Enforcement Protection Fund. The, the, the fire fund, they got, they, they got their money. But they're the, the fair haired folks, you know, with the, the governor's not mad at them, legislature's not mad at them. They're, they're mad at law enforcement. Our Law Enforcement Protection Fund, again, has been a, basically a slush fund for the, the, the state. All this money goes in there that comes out of, of insurance that we pay and it's, it's pulled that, there's a, a section that goes and supposed to go to pay for, help fund law enforcement. Well, we get a, a portion of it, the rest of it goes into the general fund. That's not where it belongs, that's not what it's designed for, that's, and that's our money. That's just basically us being taxed once again for something and, and taxed and not getting anything for it because nobody minds paying that little bit extra if it's gonna go to buy some Tahos for, for the sheriff's office. I mean, everybody's like, okay, well, they probably need that, but when it goes into the general fund and then it's gonna be used for what, uh, I don't know, subsidizing marijuana sales or something, you know, I mean, that's offensive to me and it should be offensive to y'all as well. So they're already looking at taking that money and uh, the excess that they were gonna redistribute to all of us and I realize that the governor vetoed it last time. I thought, we all thought she was vetoing it because it was taking away her power on the boards, on the law enforcement uh, academy board. No, it, it's pretty obvious now that she, she vetoed it because it was gonna give us more money. It, it, because it, what it would have done, the, the, the bill that passed that she vetoed would have doubled the money that I get for my Law Enforcement Protection Fund. So instead of fifty-five thousand, I would have got over a hundred thousand a year. She vetoed that and we thought, oh, it's, it's because of the board. No, it's pretty obvious now why. Because we're not gonna get that money. Now, the new law or the new bill that, that's being floated to replace the one from last year is going to take, I think it's six or seven million to give to DPS, Department of Public Safety, this, a state agency, so that they can teach us about social injustice. That's, that's the guise that they're going with. So instead of that money that we're supposed to get, what they're gonna do is come up with some training program to tell us how terrible we are and how we should redo things.
More wokeness.
More wokeness, exactly. That's, that's exactly what it is and we, you know, we thought it was kinda wearing down a little bit. But now, now it's pretty obvious why the, the bill, the, the bill was vetoed last year and now they're coming in with wokeness two point oh to uh, make sure we don't get that money. So when you're, when you're talking to, to legislators and you're watching these different bills, keep an eye on that one because uh, and it had a whole lot of bad stuff in it last year, but we were like, okay, we can try and work with that as long as we're gonna get some more money, that helps. But now it's all the bad stuff in there along with us not getting any more money. And it, again, that would have helped the, the little places who don't have a lot of money because it would have given them, right now, you get money by how much the uh, how many, how many uh, sworn law enforcement officers you have. How many commissioned, I'm sorry, law enforcement, not commissioned, certified is what it goes by, is certified. Well, of course, we get a large portion because we've got a lot of certified law enforcement officers. Well, Roosevelt County, for example, doesn't have a lot, so they get a little chunk of money. Well, they need the money more than anybody does, so you're talking somebody like Albuquerque PD gets, gets the most. Somebody has a good budget, but the, so this would, that, last year, that would have equalized that a little bit and given a little extra money to the smaller agencies. Now they're just, they're just left to fend for themselves if this one passes. And I've got a sneaking suspicion it's gonna pass. So there's a lot coming, so be prepared.
I, I've got a question to back up to the, the COVID comment that you had earlier that Burnaleo and Albuquerque said they weren't going to do that. But what can we do to support them in that and, and is there anything there?
I don't know, and it's just now coming out that Albuquerque said that. I, I just read an article this.
I haven't ever heard that, so.
I heard it this morning, they said because um, they're down employees anyway that it to, that would make it worse and for them to be able to provide public service like they need to, they weren't gonna require.
I saw that from Burnaleo County also, they said there's a lot of people who are eligible.
Yeah.
So that, that will be a test that eggs are hens.
And, and hopefully that will be, lay some groundwork before we're stuck in a decision-making process. Because I'll, I'll tell you right now, I've told my deputies, I said, you're my deputies. I won't require you to do any of that, however, you are county employees and if county government says, this is what you have to do, I don't, I don't like your paycheck. I mean, so I can tell you all day long, I'm not gonna make you do that. But I, if, if, if a, a government entity says, well, you have to do it to get your paycheck, I, I don't have any choice with that. I don't have, I don't, I, I don't have any, I don't have any boxing gloves to put on to win that fight. So it's gonna be interesting and, and the county manager and I have talked about it and we're, it, it's, hopefully, hopefully, we're, we're very hopeful that something is gonna be decided in a good way before it really gets to us, where we have to make some hard decisions.
Well, we, we, we need to probably ban to get it because we don't see eye to eye with Burnaleo and Albuquerque on four things, so. I mean, if, if we can see eye to eye on this, then, then we need to go and support, you know, I, I, everything else aside, but if we can all say, hey, we don't support this, if thirty-three counties can, can come out and say, hey, this is our resolution, this is, this is what we're gonna do. We're not gonna require this, then we have, then we have some stroke because most of the time, we're just left in the dust by, you know, Doniana and Burnaleo. So do we know where Doniana's at on this? Have they said anything?
Uh, Doniana has already mandated vaccinations for portions of their staff, law enforcement corrections, yeah.
Okay.
But that was, they did that months ago. They did that months ago.
Be thirty-two.
So, and I'll find out more because we're gonna have a, 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 a board director's meeting for uh, NMC coming up and we've been in discussions, I've been talking quite a bit with Rebecca Long, my buddy in Lee, about what they're doing and how they're doing it. And I'll see her when uh, we, when I go to, to Hobbs this afternoon and tomorrow in Lee County. So I'll, I'll spend some time visiting with her and find out. And hopefully I can find out some more information about what they plan to do. And they're a little more radical than we are, which is cool, so they can help blaze the trail.
Oh, in periods.
I've got a quick question, if you don't mind, to back up even further, uh, and help me remember, when Florida and a couple other states sent, was it police officers or guard to Texas to help shut off? Okay, so when y'all get together as a sheriff's group, and this is a total question, sorry, Cass. If other counties in the state decided to support those counties on the border and say, hey, we can send an officer, two officers to help support, because I understand a lot of those border, border counties have no money and it does benefit us because that is coming through. I mean, I think you've seen it in, in drug trafficking and everything else. It's a huge benefit to us to stop it there and not let it get, is that something that is feasible for some of these other counties to say, hey, we don't have a lot, but we might have one, we might have, and we get a force to go? Or is that not possible in New Mexico?
No, it is possible and because, believe it or not, sheriff is one, the officer, the sheriff is one of the last really, really powerful elected offices in the state by state statute. There, there's some, there's some old west kinda, uh, and Cass knows, there's some old west wording in, in the statutes providing sheriffs with a huge amount of authority. So it gets, it gets, some people get confused on it that, that it's more than what it is. But like, I won't go into that, but uh, a sheriff, I can, I can call on any one of you, deputize any one of, anybody in this room and say, you're now my deputy and I need you to go do this and if you say no, I can arrest you and charge you with a crime. So it's, it's kind of interesting, so a sheriff can say, yeah, I need help, come help me. And honestly, if you look at the statutes, they're, they're kind of, it's, it's a little confusing because it says that a sheriff or a deputy can go anywhere in the state to do any, I'm, I'm trying to remember the exact wording of it, but so of any process, people have talked about what that process is, is that enforcing law? It could be argued, so it's not even absolutely necessary for a deputy or sheriff to have, even have a cross commission to go into another county and help, but it would happen. If, if we did something like that, they could be cross commissioned and the sheriff could say, yep, you're my deputy now. So we could do that. It's something that, you know, we would definitely, I would wanna talk to Cass and, and the county manager about before I committed to it. I mean, granted, I could, I'd do whatever I want, but I might end up paying a price for it and, and the county would pay a price for it and it's something that I have to be responsible and accountable to the citizen.
Last resort, I was just curious, I mean.
Yes, we could and we talked about it.
Because my second question, and again, this isn't a dig, this is a true question, is our governor, I, I said it in the last meeting, hasn't said a word. Has she yet to say a word about the crisis on the border as of late? So I, I know Abbott's on the border today, I watched that on the news this morning. I know he, as of this morning, according to the news, he hasn't heard from the president. So the president's mute on this, our governor's mute on this, and I think you're right. I think you see a funnel coming to New Mexico because everyone else is getting, I mean, they stopped it right there mainly because of, of local law enforcement.
Huge presence by uh, Texas DPS.
Yeah, and a great job by them.
Yes.
I mean, honestly, so.
The thing I brought up with everybody, I was the wet blanket on the, the Posse Party, um, was I said, look, because I asked, how, how much of this land is private land and how much is federal land? That we would need to go where this fatal funnel is, most of it is public land, is, is federal land. If it's private land, we can enforce criminal trespass laws, we can enforce all these things. The, the county can pass a nuisance law, anything they want, and we can enforce it there. But on federal land, because we can't enforce immigration law, we're not allowed to do that. So we can't do that and that's what Texas is doing and I really, that was a good, I, because I think some of that is public land there where they are. But what they're doing is they're just, there's a presence, as a deterrent. Can they arrest anybody for immigration? No, they're not allowed to. But that's where we're stuck is, because I brought that up and said, heck, heck, yeah, maybe we should do this. Then I thought, oh no, wait a minute, is that federal land? Is that, because we don't have any, what, we, we can't enforce criminal trespass laws.
Yeah, so, so how that, how that would work and how the strength would be, would be in roadblocks and extra patrols essentially like that. And it would essentially just be drugs because you're not gonna arrest anybody. You, you can't even arrest an illegal alien on a, on a county road. Like, I, I mean, you, 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 you can't do that, so what you can do is, is, it's essentially gotta be drugs or trafficking.
And that's the thing we've looked at.
Something like that, yeah.
Running a drug enforcement operation uh, as a deterrent. And that's, that's basically what it would be, but again, that's so far, so far, I, there's not a lot of folks who can commit anybody to that because we're all fighting our own battles in our own counties. And even, even if I'm down like three, even if I'm fully staffed, I'm, I'm still, my, my folks are still working hard. So to take two or three of them and send them somewhere else would have a huge impact. It could be done if, if it was absolutely necessary, but.
You know, if you, if you do start picking out deputies, just if you see Jason Burns, just be careful on deputizing. I mean, I just want that to be, like, if you're thinking that, I just, I mean. We're gonna go back on that, yeah, you know, that would be.
Get the badge back. You have to give me that back.
What's done is done there, what's done is done.
You guys remember, this is supposed to be comments from the sheriff and we're not supposed to be carrying on discussions. I'm just warning you that that's.
Do I need to come up with department updates?
Sorry. That's what you should have done, it didn't, department updates, then they can have a conversation.
Well, I'm not a department though, so it's kinda difficult.
Legislative updates.
Does that make a difference?
Do what?
Since we added the word updates, does that make a difference?
Well, he's doing the, it's not a topic on the agenda, that's where you can't have the discussion like this. Because there may be people out, wanna come to a meeting and raise cane and know what you guys are gonna think about these topics. I'm not getting at you, I'm just saying be careful.
Gotcha. I mean, I, if you can put me in the, with elected officials up the department.
Too late now.
Next time I'll remind you.
Heard those cats back.
Would you like to be on this portion or in this portion?
Well, forget that.
Any, any further updates, Sheriff?
Anyway, now I've gotten us in trouble.
Well, yes, yeah.
And it's not your birthday.
And it's not even my birthday.
Thanks a lot.
We're gonna let it go this once.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll let y'all know uh, what comes out, out of our meetings and our discussions. We have quite a bit to do at the, at the sheriff's meetings. They'll be busy all day tomorrow, I'm sure.
One more quick question.
Okay.
Are we still confiscating more fentanyl in Eddie County than Burnaleo?
I would, I would think so, we, I, I, because I'm not seeing our numbers dropping. I, I've got a, a HIDA, I think our next HIDA meeting is in November and we'll get even more updates there, um, so that we'll, we'll have an idea what's going on around the state. I know what we have and what we're doing is significant and I see what's going on. Still over region six, which is Lee County, uh, Chavis County, Lincoln County, Otero County. So I'm seeing what they're doing too and they're pulling a lot, Otero County especially at the border checkpoint.
Say Highway fifty-four is uh.
Unbelievable.
That is a corridor. And if, if we were gonna support anybody, you know, we, I mean, we could put a, you know, those guys in Dimming and those guys in Otero. You know, those are, those are the guys that need the, that help, because we're not gonna dim any of them.
Well, Otero's our neighbor, I mean, our, right up, button up against this neighbor and uh, Sheriff Wax is a good friend of mine, he's a good sheriff. And he uh, we support him as, as much as we possibly can, he's from Cloudcroft, so.
Known him for a really long time.
Well, he's, he's a good sheriff that, that has good ideas and, and the, the thought he thinks about his people.
Sheriff, I know you know this, but I'm, I'm sure you know that the, I believe the board supports a hundred percent the security of the citizens of Eddie County and, and, and securing their safety, so.
And also yours and your happiness.
Absolutely. Well, the chief and I are keeping a close eye on everything and we're, we're, it's, it's like herding cats sometimes, trying to keep all of our, our ducks rounded up and going in the right direction because we have a lot going on here in Eddie County, there isn't any more.
Sooner or later, something's gonna happen, you guys are gonna be getting a jam. I think this board would support you across the board.
Thank you, thank you. We need that, that, that means a lot to us and it means a lot to the deputies to know that they have that kind of support. And to know that, that I can come in and, and, and get them what they need and have the support that they need.
You wanna vote on something like that, Cass?
Let's put it on the next one.
Okay, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Next item is county manager, comments, announcements and updates. As Commissioner Carlson is unable to be here today, I wanted to share with you a proclamation that Luna County made on the ninth of September. This proclamation was in support of New Mexico's oil and gas industry after. This proclamation was in support of New Mexico's oil and gas industry after Commissioner Carlson and, and Mr. Hooper had shared the Arrowhead Center study with them, um, and, and, uh, was very well received, they had a, had a very good discussion. And so the, the mileage that we're getting out of that study continues to pay dividends. Um, I know that, that, uh, Mr. Fanning shared that yesterday with another legislative member and that individual had not seen it and was, was very interested in looking at it and understanding it. So I, I just wanted to recognize Luna County, um, and their, their proclamation of support. Uh, I received from, um, I received from Curry County, um, a request to consider, um, a res- they passed a resolution, um, earlier this month, asking for change in para legislation that would allow the rehire of retired employees without compromising the para, their, their benefits. Um, this was something that came up a few years ago. The Para Board wasn't really excited about it, interested in it, the way it was calculations. The Para Fund apparently is still underfunded. But Curry County was, their concern was, given the, the situation with COVID and some of the mandates and things, getting staff, um, some of it, maybe detention, some of it maybe law enforcement, some of it be other, other functions within the county. Um, but they were wanting the, um, the governor and the legislature to amend the, the para requirements that would allow the rehire of retired employees if there was a need. So I said I would make the commission aware of it, and if that's something that, uh, is of interest to you, we can, we, we can talk after the meeting and then if there's enough interest, we can put it on the agenda for, for the next, next meeting. Presently, you know, Eddie County always has jobs posted. Um, the sheriff's department is close to being staffed, I think they have a couple of vacancies. Detention is always a challenge. That's, uh, they're always hiring detention officers and we're always losing detention officers. Um, if, if vaccine mandates come into play, that could be a larger issue for the county. So just something to take under consideration. Um, the other item, or another item, um, I just have an example here. This is, uh, this, an example of a senate district map. Um, the, the citizen, the community, that are the CRC, that was established by the legislature to take public comments about districting comments. That window is open until I think, um, mid-October or October first. Um, right now, about the only, well, the most dominant comment from, from within Eddie County came from the city of Carlsbad. They have some examples that they drew, which had a senator from Eddie County. Um, I've had some brief discussions with some of the commissioners about Al Davis's opinion is Eddie County has benefited from having multiple senators help the county on a broader front. I'm concerned that having a sole senator may diminish that impact and influence. Um, but that's my opinion. My point is that as a commission, I think the commission needs to have a discussion at some point about what is it that Eddie County would like to represent to that committee and get that input with an example and some reasons why, that they can then incorporate into their, into their designs and recommendations back to the legislature. So that window is coming to a close, uh, something that, that I think should be on your mind, and then we can get back together. If you'd like, I can, I don't know how we do that, but talk to the clerk and see if, what that looks like from, from a county commission and making a recommendation or how we'd have to do it through the Public, the Open Meetings Act. So anyway, FYI. Um, we talked a little bit about COVID. Um, what I've got is just really information here. The Legislative Finance Committee has been meeting for, on their regular schedule. We're gonna have a, a, an opportunity to talk to them about capital outlay in November. We've talked to our local legislators, but what, what's represented here is just, uh, one page or some brief points about what Eddie County has done with monies that we've invested in our infrastructure. On the back, um, are some graphics. Eddie County is, you know, in the last three years, we've expended nearly sixty million dollars on infrastructure, principally roads. Um, of that, Eddie County has committed, you know, the lion's share. We, we partnered with the state, we partnered with NMDOT, we have some federal funds. The point being, as we talk to legislators and as the capital outlay and other, uh, funding discussions occur within the state, if the state is looking to invest monies and the, the theory is that there are federal monies coming to the state to be invested, we want them to understand that Eddie County is a great place to invest those monies. The majority of the projects that are on this list have been completed. We're not one of those counties that holds on to money and holds on to money and holds on to money and never, never expends it. The majority of the money that's represented here, it has been spent and the balance is encumbered. So, um, we're sharing this graphic with our legislators and anybody else that is willing to listen, as we have discussion about where will New Mexico invest these monies that this flush money, they have one point four billion dollars of new money that, that the committee has already identified in their interim report that was published la- late August, early September, so a few weeks ago. Um, we'd like to have a bigger slice of that pie, and we have places to invest it, right? We, but we have a list of, like you see there at the bottom, the bottom right corner of those shovel-ready projects. Um, Commissioner McCutcheon's, uh, second Pecos River crossing is one of those projects. Southeast Loop's a project, Southwest Loop's a project. Basically helping support additional economic development, improving property tax or, or property values, in- increasing, um, economic opportunity along those routes as we, we connect loops within the county. So, um, that's something we're working on. I can send you the electronic versions of this if you're, if you're interested. Um, we talked about the vaccinations and the testing, we'll continue working on that. Uh, the last item is, uh, Brian Stevens and I have been working with the courts, the district attorneys, and an architect on a potential remodel of courthouse to accommodate the fifth judge. I received a letter from Chief Judge of the fifth district, is that the correct title? And, uh, they were, they were advocating for another judge here in, in Eddie County because of the caseload and the backlog and things like that. So we're looking to see if we can accomplish that. Um, would, would be, we, we could, we could, I think we can do it. Question is, how much money will it cost and where will we find that money? So, um, more to come on that. We're gonna set up a meeting with, uh, the judges and the district attorney's office, show them what we've got, and then see what we can do. So I think that's plenty for now. The next item on the agenda is the county commissioner's comments, unless you had any questions.
I want to send a special thank you to Jason Burns for taking Commissioner Beard and I out and viewing all the progress on roads that they've made. Also, he helped, uh, live house by moving a large storage unit into precarious spots. So we really appreciate that. Um, that will allow them to start moving into second phase of opening detox facility. So I really, really appreciate it and the county's support on that. And also to Jennifer, I know this is like, it's hard work. People maybe don't have a idea of how long it takes to coordinate things like that. And, you know, I just really appreciate the county's efforts on healthcare and keeping people safe and meeting the requirements of what people need to be able to work. So I really appreciate that. Um, and just everybody, just stay safe and, and thank you for what you're doing.
I think I've said all my comments during my questioning, so.
So those comments were just?
They're, they're, he did them earlier.
He did.
He coordinated them with the sheriff.
Those were commissioner comments.
I think that's what it was.
Yeah, there it is. So those are all commissioner comments, but, uh, I would echo, I, I mean, I know everybody works hard, but I understand right now for Jennifer, this has been not an extremely exciting, what are we on, like twenty-one months now or something? So, or fifteen years, it doesn't, I don't know if it's dog life, but it's, gets pretty miserable at times. So thanks for all the hard work, thanks to whole county for all the hard work, cause I know that. Now, I have been getting, the only thing I wanna address, I'm getting all these emails, right? And they're all generic, and that's kind of annoying. If, if you want to send something to an elected official, please make it personal, cause they would more likely to read it, number one, right? But I understand you're my boss, and I understand all that stuff. This commissioner, I can only speak for myself, will never vote for mandates for anything, uh, as to that. So if that helps those emails and helps answer that question to folks, I will never support mandating anybody take a, it doesn't matter what it is, whether it be a vaccine or thing. Now, do I recommend it? That's a totally different subject, but I will never mandate it. So I don't know, if y'all are getting the same email, man, I'm getting a bunch of them all of a sudden. So, uh, again, you're my boss, a hundred percent understand that. Uh, I will never vote for a mandate, they can remove me from the board, whatever they gotta do after that happens, I don't know what all will, I mean, we've seen what the state does if you don't enforce what they dictate to us. So be it. Um, I'm not here to mandate, that's not what America's about, that's not what this country's about, and that's not what I was elected to do is mandate. I'm here to serve and to help, um, and that's it, and, and get the best help we possibly can. That's why the, the testing stations drive me crazy, cause that doesn't help, the vaccines, you know, not having it available at times or whatever, it doesn't, I mean, we've got to be here to help the citizens make good, informed decisions. Um, and as I always say, if you wanna make a good, informed decision, don't listen to the politicians, cause they're all dumb, self-included. I mean, I'll include that. Talk to your healthcare professional. Guess what? They went to college for it, they got an education in it, a- and they probably know what it, if you wanna know how to cook a brisket, depending on who you wanna talk to, some people don't think I have a clue, I can maybe help you with that. I don't know anything else. If you wanna talk about, talk about your health, talk to the professionals, talk to people I actually know. I don't go talk to a politician when I'm building a house, right? I don't ask them, hey, does this look like a good design? Cause they're idiots and probably, who knows? So use your resources, use your heads, make your best decision for your family, but this commissioner, I refuse to ever mandate anything upon anyone. So that's all I have.
I'd like to start off, you're not gonna like this, but I'm gonna put out kudos for Jason Burns again.
I think he's a really good road builder. I think he's, I think he would be a, a, a more inferior sheriff deputy.
Well, that's what I wanna build on. I mean, at the risk of having to grease his ears to get him through the door. We've been talking about the West Loop, we've been surveying the West Loop, we've been promised the West Loop, and I could throw a few other instances, and therefore it seems to me about seventeen years. And Jason Burns has actually dropped the bulldozer off out there and marking ground and setting it up. As we speak, the West Loop is under construction and being built, and, and Jason had awful lot to do with that. And I, I think he, we need to acknowledge that. Uh, back to the sheriff's comments, is, is, is what you're saying, is that being published anywhere in the state of New Mexico about the funnel that's being created from California, Texas, Arizona, right up through New Mexico? Do we need something along the lines of an Arrowhead study? Red Rocket advertising campaign, something to get the word out there of what's going on? Is there any way we can promote that and make, try, I, cause you know, Albuquerque's gonna have nothing to say about it. They're, you know, this is kind of a big deal from what I see and what I'm hearing, and it's, and you know, back to my question on the fentanyl. A lot of that stuff's coming right through Carlsbad. And I'd like something to make the, the world aware of it. And, uh, last but not least, uh, I think I'm on board with you on the state senator. Uh, we've got three pretty good ones, and the politics of some of this, I know there's a big push, we need one. I was mad about it ten years ago, a lot of people were, I've made arguments in favor of one. But when we start redistricting, pure politics of the deal, if we try to make one senator here represent at all, that's gonna push somebody that represents us well somewhere else in southeastern New Mexico into Albuquerque to get votes. And we could actually lose a senate seat over that. And that's just pure speculation on my part, so, and I'll let it go with that, so. And thank you to Jennifer, I build on that, you know, happy birthday. You need something going right, right now, so. And I think if the sheriff could go ahead and sing.
That's what I was gonna say.
Y'all don't have that. My dad would be singing that. Uh, that was really the only thing I needed to correct, was Jennifer's job, that's, I'm so glad that she is in that position. I, I really am, really am grateful for you in that position, I'm grateful for the sheriff as well. You know, it's pretty hard, pretty hard to find a sheriff that gets elected to enforce laws, and then you have one that refuses, that refuses to enforce laws. And I think that's handing power back is, is what is problem, is what is the problem with most sheriffs or most politicians. So I'd demand a sheriff for not, not just, uh, erasing all the power that he could, that he could muster, so. And, uh, other than that, we're, we're ready to go. Appreciate our first responders and everybody after them. Definitely, we still have an executive session, so.
All that, all that preparation and you come with a.
Yep. A little poof.
It's okay, Commissioner, we, we know, we know your passion. All right, um, we do need an executive session. Um, it should be.
Best, fifteen minutes.
Yeah, it's always a pleasure.
Dog years.
All right, coming back.
I don't believe it'll take that long.
Coming back at ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen.
All right. Entertaining motion that we go into executive session to discuss Suda County Assessor returning at ten fifteen.
Second.
Motion second, please call and vote.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Beard? Yes.
Thank you, we'll see you in fifteen.
Don't leave, darling, we're serious.